I'd ask you to please rise and join us for the invocation by Reverend Theodore Henderson, followed by the pledge to our nation's flag led by Councilman Fred New.
...each and every citizen to discharge each duty in such a manner to bring credit to you as well as to this community. Reward our labor with inner joy and peace of knowing that doing the best that we could with all the strength that we had. Amen.
Amen.
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, you have before you this evening's agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
I recommend we approve as presented.
Second.
The move by Councilman Hutchinson and seconded by Councilman Sutherland to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we have before us the consent agenda. Those items on the council agenda which are considered routine and non-controversial are marked with an asterisk and will be acted upon by a single roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of council so requests, in which event the matter shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered a separate item. What is the pleasure of Councilman Neal?
I would like to remove B1 for Simmon Park Place Drainage Project from the consent agenda.
Item, attend to item 3B, B1. Other requests? Your motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Then moved by Councilman Lewis and seconded by Councilman Hare to approve the consent agenda as amended. Is there any further discussion? I'm clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutherland?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Councilman.
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero. Item number two, we now have a public hearing, final reading of the proposed ordinance number 2015-24, rezoning request for property located adjacent with West Property Line of 1,042 South Bradford Street, consisting of 2,373 plus or minus square feet portion of a 10,373 plus or minus parcel owned by Halpern Family Property Investment LP. This property is currently zoned R8, one-family residence, and the proposed zoning is C1A Limited Commercial. The first reading of the proposed ordinance was accomplished during the council meeting of December 14, 2015. Copies are available at the entrance of the council chambers. First, I will entertain a motion to consider the final reading of ordinance 2015-24 by title only, which is simply to allow the waiving of the reading.
So moved.
Separate motion will be necessary for its adoption.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Sutherland?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Cole. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ordinance 2015-24, amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city of Dover by changing the zoning designation of a portion of the property located at 1,042 South Bradford Street. Mrs. Townsend, would you please brief council members on the proposed rezoning?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, the rezoning request would rezone 2,373 square feet of a residential lot on South Bradford Street. The portion that fronts South Bradford Street would remain R8, and the portion of the lot that is adjacent to the neighboring commercial property fronting on Governor's Avenue would be rezoned. The remaining area that would stay as R8 would be 8,000 square feet, and that is a lot size that is consistent with the minimum lot size of the one-family residence zone. The purpose of the rezoning is to shift the zoning line to allow the neighboring commercial property on South Governor's Avenue to expand its parking. That would be done through an administrative process if the rezoning is approved. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on January 19th. There were four members of the public who spoke and expressed concern about the proposed rezoning. Particularly, there was concern about the creep of commercial uses in the residential neighborhood. Following the public hearing, the Planning Commission voted... There is in the packet an excerpt of the draft minutes in which each member of the commission states the reason for their vote. I would remind members of council that if you vote to... If you do not vote with the Planning Commission, you would need to state your reasons for the record during the roll call. With that, I would take any questions.
Questions for Mrs. Townsend.
Questions.
Councilman Sutherland.
Has any of the Planning Committee members gone out to the actual physical site and reviewed the parking lot area, to your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge. That wasn't discussed at the meeting.
Have you done that yourself?
I'm very familiar with the area.
You're familiar, or you went out and looked at it?
I didn't look at it specifically for this application, but I have been in the rear area of the commercial property where it abuts this parcel.
Questions for Mrs. Townsend. I'm going to go ahead and declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the proposed rezoning? In favor of the proposed rezoning? Sir, if you could come down and give your name and address for the record, each speaker will be allotted three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Randy Dupleshan. I'm with Davis, Bone &amp; Fidel, 23 North Walnut Street, Milford, Delaware. And I'm here tonight representing Mr. Dave Wood and also Dr. Halpern on this request for rezoning. As Ms. Townsend stated, what we're asking is that the rear portion of this residential lot be rezoned to commercial, which will allow us to expand the parking that is existing on the commercial property that is an office space right now. And what's happening with that property, there's two renters on the first floor. One is the Board of Elections and the other is Blue Cross. And Chesapeake Utilities is leasing the second floor. They're going to expand their office space into that property. There's about 56 spaces on the site, and they feel that's... They think that's fairly close to being adequate, but they're not sure if it would meet their requirements. So they're asking for this rear of the property to be rezoned so they can add another seven to eight parking spaces there, which would allow a little bit of overflow for them. I know that some of the parking was removed when Governor's Avenue was turned into a foreland. There used to be parallel parking there, I believe, and there's no longer parking available. There is some parking on the side streets, but I think it's restricted by certain hours of the day. So this is kind of just a request to expand this parking a little bit, to provide a little more room should it be needed for visitors and what have you. The grange is on the south side of this property, so there's a parking lot that's adjacent to this property. The parking that we would be installing will be screened. There'll be a privacy fence there. I think that's a requirement of the city. And again, it's a fairly straightforward request for rezoning. We're not rezoning the whole property. The house will remain. It'll still be a residence, and that will not change. It'll just be the section adjacent to the existing parking on the commercial property. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilman Hutchinson and then Councilman Neal.
Sir, Chesapeake Utilities, how many people will be working in that office?
I'm not sure. We're thinking somewhere around 50, but they haven't told us the number.
And do you know what kind of service they're going to provide in that office?
It'll just be office space. I don't think...
Is it IT or...?
I do not know, sir.
Okay, and downstairs is the election?
The Board of Elections, and I think...
And how many people work there?
I am unaware of that as well. But there's also Blue Crosses there, so...
Councilman Neal.
Looking... Excuse me.
Go ahead, finish your thought, I'm sorry.
Looking at the parking lot and having been passed there, there's very few cars that use it during the day at this time.
I'm going to be honest, I ride by that parking lot every single day, every day, and it is never full.
Right.
So, I mean, I understand what you're discussing, but I don't understand where the need is. If you've got 56 parking spaces available, correct?
That's correct. And there could be upwards of 50 people working there for Chesapeake Utilities, so...
Councilman Neal.
Who's actually requesting the parking? Did it come from the tenants, or is it coming from the building owner?
It's coming from the building owner, but the tenant has raised some concerns that they're concerned there may not be enough parking for all the tenants.
Do you have evidence of that?
Just the request that came through the owner. And unfortunately, the owner is not here tonight. He's out of town. But Dr. Halpern is here tonight, so...
Councilman Hare.
I guess my concern is, you say you don't know. It could be... And the owner advertised the building as ample parking, and the Planning Commission, the impression was given that the negotiation for the leased space was based upon these parking, getting these spots, even though the people that are within negotiations feel they have enough parking, but were asking to get some just to be safe. So they could have enough. They don't know. Nobody knows. I mean, I think it'd be worth waiting to see, because they say they feel they have enough parking. We're just asking to see if they could get a little more. So to inconvenience the residents and say, okay, don't worry about it. You're going to have another parking lot in your backyard or next door, but that might be used and might not be used. We don't know, because the people renting the space say they feel they have enough parking. They're just looking for an overflow, which could talk to the grange, like some of the other businesses do, to get an extra six or seven spots.
Well, the tenant was the one that brought the concern to the owner of the property, that he was concerned there may not be enough parking. I don't know how many people they're going to have in the building initially, and that might end up growing, but we're anticipating about 50 people, and there's 56 spaces.
I'm just reading what it said, that you told the Planning Commission. The tenant is in negotiations with someone who wants to lease the second floor, and they feel they have enough parking.
That's the owner felt he had enough parking.
Okay.
The tenant is the one that was concerned that he may not...
It says, "In negotiation, they feel they have enough parking." And it advertises ample parking, and there's 56 spots, and at any given time, there's 35 to 38 empty spots there every day. And you don't know how many people are going to be working up there, and I don't think it's right to inconvenience the residents with the creep of more blacktop in the commer... I just don't see it.
Councilman Sutherland.
Yes. What hours of business is open in comparison to the allotted parking on the street?
The hours of business, I would assume, would be eight to five.
Is there allotted parking within that timeframe on the street that you were talking about, that you're not too sure about the timeframe?
I didn't specifically look at the signs. I went out there this afternoon and looked, and there was parking on both sides of the side street, but there were signs that were saying that there's restrictive hours on one side, so...
But you didn't see the timeframe for the restricted hours?
I did not notice the timeframe.
Okay, thank you, sir.
No, sir.
Thank you.
Joel Halpern, 4 Forest Hills Court, Dover. I might be able to help this gentleman out. In your response, it's permit parking. You cannot park there all day. The hours of operation, normal business, usually from nine to four. And according to parking requirements, Mr. Hare, it does not meet the parking requirements that the tenant has asked for. Some of that places were taken away during the Governor's Avenue renovation, and consequently, we are short of parking. And the other thing I want to tell you is, is it's very feasible that Chesapeake Utilities is building a new building. This housing, I don't know how long it'll be there for. You know, I can't sit here and tell you that they're going to build a new building. That's their plan. But in the meantime, they do need extra parking. And if you look at the amount of space and the amount of parking places, I don't think it meets the requirement. And so that was the... It was not Dave Wood that brought that concern up. It was the tenants.
If you were building that building new, I believe...
Sir, can I ask you to use your microphone?
If you're building a building new, I believe it's, what, one parking spot for every 300 square feet?
The C1A zone does not specify a parking requirement, but the other zones where offices are permitted are typically 1 to 300 square feet as a minimum.
Right, and this building has 1 to 290 square feet.
The reason it looks like there's a lot of parking there is the place has been vacant for years, absolutely years.
But it still has one space for every 290 square feet, which, if you were building that building today under a different zoning, you would be required to have one space for every 300 square feet. So you more than meet the parking requirements of the city and other zoning areas.
All I can tell you is, is the tenant was the one that brought up this problem, and they felt there wasn't enough parking.
Well, that's not what was said at the Planning Commission. They felt they had adequate parking. They wanted a hedge.
Go ahead.
What I meant to say was that the...
I ask you to use the microphone.
Yeah. What I... My meaning was that the owner felt that they had adequate parking. It was the tenant that did not feel they had enough, so I think that's what I explained earlier.
Easy to say now.
All right, thank you. Is there any further questions for the gentleman? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak in favor of the rezoning? In favor of the rezoning? Is there anyone who would like to come forward and speak against the proposed rezoning? Against the proposed rezoning? And if you could please state your name and address for the record. Each speaker is allotted three minutes.
I'm Tony Gillis. I live at 1086 South Bradford Street, and I have a petition here from residents on South Bradford Street. There are 18 residents that have signed this petition to not rezone this property to dual use. Back a few years ago, we had a situation where rezoning was requested on our street for more commercial space, and we were told at that time, somebody brought up that there was a moratorium on rezoning property on South Bradford Street. It was affirmed in the council that there is a moratorium on that, and to the best of my knowledge, that moratorium has not been changed. Additionally, we are concerned as residents on South Bradford Street. It's a community of families with small children and the very elderly, and we like the street quiet and calm, and we understand we have mixed use on our street, but we'd like to maintain it at the current use level. We have seen over the years, I've been there since 99, some of the residents longer. We've seen over the years that there's been a significant creep of commercial space into our neighborhood, and we would like to stop it, actually. We would like not to have more commercial space and more traffic on our street where our children are playing and where those who are elderly are crossing the street. And some... I'm not that old, but even crossing the street for me sometimes is a little difficult because somebody comes zooming by that isn't a resident on our street. Now, we can't stop traffic. We understand that, but we don't have to add to it by adding commercial space. And let's see. And we were out... I was one of the ones at the Planning Commission meeting and spoke again against the rezoning of this property, and I thought interesting, and I'm sure it's in the minutes, that the two that voted against it were citing creep into the neighborhood, and the fact that the representative for Mick Wood and Dr. Halpern indicated that there was sufficient parking. They just wanted a hedge. Well, we don't think that that's necessary. Okay, so who could I hand this to?
Bring it forward.
Okay.
Thank you. For anyone else who would like to come forward and speak against the proposed rezoning? Against the proposed rezoning?
Hi, Regina Stublo, 1081 South Bradford Street. Just, we have gone by the parking lot also, and there's hardly ever anybody parked in that parking lot. And all of this talk about hedging their bet about the new parking spots in the back, if you do that for that one property, when is it going to be another property is going to have a little bit of their property taken away to make parking spots for more blacktop in our area? And also, if it's true that Chesapeake might be building another place, why do we want to add more spots if they're going to be leaving, if they're not even going to be staying? And if we have enough right now, why do we have to put that in just as an extra measure, and then they're going to be gone, maybe?
Thank you. For anyone else who would like to come forward and say against the proposed rezoning? Against the proposed rezoning? I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing closed. Because a petition has been presented to us per state law, we have to vet that petition, so therefore we cannot take action this evening until we vet the petition and all the names that are on the petition. I think the appropriate action to take at this time would be to defer the item until our February 22 meeting. I'll entertain a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Councilman Anderson and seconded by Councilman Cole to defer the item to consideration at the February 22 meeting, so the city may vet the names that have been presented on the petition. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you to everyone who came out this evening. Item 3B, B1, Persimmon Park Place Drainage Project was on the Legislative Finance and Administration Committee. Councilman Hare, I'm sure the chair of that committee. Do you want to introduce that, or do you defer to Councilman Neal?
This has to do with some of the wetlands, I guess, and what I'll do is defer to Councilman Neal, as he's probably a little more familiar with it than I am.
Yeah, the area of Persimmon Park Place, along with the Wild Meadows, is directly across the street from the Dover Downs woodlands. Woodlands and wetlands go together. The problem with this area is it is wetlands. And when Persimmon Park Place, it's my understanding, was first developed, it was developed as a leased land community, and then later developed into a... Where they sold the land in feet, and it became a common interest community. Both communities suffer from the same thing. The water level is such that it causes sinkholes and problems. It definitely needs this drainage project. The difference between the two communities is that, one, the city has approved both. The city then has a responsibility in dealing with the drainage at Persimmon Park Place. Is it needed? Absolutely. It is a danger to the people walking through it, to the kids that are in the area, and the like. The difference is, in Wild Meadows, it is the rents that pay the freight, and the community owner wants to get the owner... The residents to pay more for the problems that have developed with the fishers in the land. Now, fortunately, the Planning Department, along with the code inspectors, have been over at Wild Meadows. Because of the serious nature of it, it is subject to litigation, which is continuing on from November of 2014, an arbitration that has occurred. It needs continual help because of the dangers it presents to the community, the people who are living there, and whether grandkids do come to Wild Meadows, which is a 55-plus. The fishers and the sinkholes that have developed are drowning these drains, which don't seem to be adequate. Most recently, even after the litigation and the $102,000 worth of repairs that have done, more problems have cropped up. I strongly support this measure of the drainage for Persimmon Park Place. It is an absolute necessity. What's happening with these homes are the value of the homes are dropping. With the assessed value dropping, then the taxes collected drop. It does not help the city at all. We need to be able to protect the people here, because previous councils approved this development just as they approved the Wild Meadows development, and we need to see what we can do to help booster the homeowners who live there. Hopefully, the... We'll have a return. To the assessed value will go up instead of going down. I think if you take a look at the charts that we have from 2010 to 2015, these are the worst two areas that have dropped. The assessments have dropped in those areas, and certainly, this drainage problem is affecting those assessed values as well. With that, I would suggest that we definitely approve this motion, and keep in mind what's going to happen in the future with it.
Can I ask a question?
Councilman Hare.
You mentioned something about Wild Meadows, and let me see if I have this correct. When Wild Meadows development was approved, they went in and put in drainage and sewers and everything so they could develop the property.
That is correct. It was required by Kent County Conservation.
So then they build the houses, and now that infrastructure that they put in is failing, and they want the homeowners to pay to fix it?
Yes. It did fail, and as the gentleman who was responsible for putting it in or recommending what had to be done said, it failed catastrophically. And this is a matter of record of the arbitration hearing that took place. Decision came down on March 30th. It's still in the courts.
So that would be kind of like if I wanted to build a development in the city, and the city came in and put sewer in for me, and I connected to the city sewer, and then the city sewer system failed. the city sewer system failed, want all the homeowners to fix it.
Yes, as opposed to spreading it across the taxpayers.
Well, that doesn't sound right, but okay.
Just procedurally, Councilman Neal had made a motion, so I need a second motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Councilman Herr, seconding. Councilman Hutchison.
I'd like to ask, Mr. Conig, would you give us an overview of your thoughts on this issue?
On the Persimmon Park Place?
Yes, please.
There is an area of Persimmon Park Place, off Susan Place, that's the actual name of the road, that it's a common property line on the east side of Persimmon Park Place that abuts Wild Meadows. There are several lots that have flooding during heavy rains. They're very wet lots. They're actually, under the current classifications, considered to be wetlands in the current definition of wetlands, and there are some existing stormwater pipes in Persimmon Park Place that were constructed under the designation of a private drainage system back when Persimmon Park Place was developed. And several years ago, I would say about 10 years ago, the city of Dover dedicated the water, the sewer, and the roads, the existing pavement in Persimmon Park Place. However, we specifically left out the dedication of the storm drain system because there was indication at the time that there were going to be failures. There are not easements in some areas, and at the time, we recommended that that infrastructure remain private. The Persimmon Park Place condo association board has requested that legislators get involved in the resolution of those drainage issues. This is the first phase of one that's actually going to design. There was a small, about a $6,000 drainage study that was done approximately a year ago, and this is a correction that is coming out of that that will most likely design, to public standards, public infrastructure standards, a stormwater pipe that will start, I think it's kind of the northeast corner of the Persimmon Park Place property and run along the backs of a number of houses towards Susan Place and connect into a couple of the road drains. The pipe is intended to be built in a public easement that will be acquired through these designs, and then, once the pipe is constructed, it would be a dedicated piece of public infrastructure to the city of Dover because it will have met all of the design standards for dedication. So this is the beginning of what will probably be additional projects coming forth in the future. The major difference between Persimmon Park Place and Wild Meadows is that Persimmon Park Place is a fee simple land transfer setup where there are many, many landowners in Persimmon Park Place, and the infrastructure associated with both the roads, the water system, and the sewer system are currently dedicated. In Wild Meadows, if I remember correctly, the water and sewer systems are dedicated to the city of Dover. They exist in easements, and if there is a break on those mains, I believe we are required to go out and maintain them and then repair the roads, if I remember correctly, only for breaks or replacement and stuff. The actual roads themselves are privately maintained. They're owned by the community or the community owner. In addition, the storm drain system and any type of drainage swales or drainage ditches in Wild Meadows are privately owned by the landowner.
Any further questions or discussion on the motion? Motion is to accept the recommendation authorizing. They have to execute to agree with this fully funded Persimmon Park Drainage Project.
I have a question. What's the cost going to be on this, Mr. Conig?
If I could, please.
Go ahead.
Mr. Lewis, the cost of the design contracts, I believe it's $27,250. $25,000 is being funded through, I believe, Denrec, and then $2,500 is being funded by Senator Bushweller and Representative Carson, I believe it was called. It breaks down. So there are two separate state revenue agreements associated with the design. There's no city funding. There's some city staff time that's associated with managing the design contract, but the out-of-pocket design expenses are being covered by the state.
Okay, so there's no cost as far as the city's concerned?
There's no out-of-pocket cost for the design of this project.
Any further discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutherland?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Herr?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes unanimously. Now, I'll accept a motion to accept the report of the Legislative Finance Administration.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Herr and seconded by Councilman Sutherland. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries unanimously. Item number six, tentative labor agreement, Dover Organization of Employees. Mr. Conig, would you please brief us on this item?
Thank you, Councilman Slavin. The city of Dover staff has been working with the Dover Organization of Employees on a successor agreement for this group to move forward that will carry us through the end of June 30, 2018. Negotiations began in February of 2015. There were seven face-to-face negotiation sessions that concluded on July 27, 2015. At that point, the Dover Organization of Employees requested that we go to mediation. There were two mediation sessions held at the end of September and early October, at which point, we reached an agreement in principle under the financial terms of a successor agreement, as well as the other conditions of a successor agreement. These final terms have been discussed in two executive sessions with city council, both on January 25 and earlier tonight, to outline the terms of the successor agreement. The proposed salary changes include, as of September 27, we would add 50 cents per hour to all labor grades in the collective bargaining matrix. On July 1 of 2016, we would add another 25 cents per hour to each of the components of the matrix, and on July 1 of 2017, we would add an additional 25 cents per hour to all components of the matrix. This agreement covers 129 and a half employees across the city. It includes a number of different positions, such as customer service reps, clerks, equipment operators, and it is influencing all of our operations from public works to customer service to a number of office operations across the city, including things like code enforcement. So it is a far-reaching group of employees. As I said, there's 129 and a half people in the calculation matrix. The proposed wage changes that I've discussed equate to an increase in cost of $832,385 over the term of the contract, which would be backdated to July 1 of 2015 and run through June 30, 2018. Total cost of labor for the contract would increase based on the additional wages and load from $22.305 million to $23.138 million, roughly 3.73% increase in total wages and load over the three-year period. An additional component of the proposed tentative agreement is proposed changes to the 401 money purchase plan. You'll recall, there are currently two plans that the city of Dover recognizes for retirement. One is the defined benefit plan. That plan was closed to new entry back in 2009, and as wages are adjusted going forward, those employees in the defined benefit plan see alterations to their final retirement calculation through those wage adjustments. For the 401 money purchase plan, this is a defined contribution plan. It's a matching plan. Currently, the minimum match is 3%, and the maximum match is 6%. All new employees that have been hired since 2009 are required to enter this plan because the defined benefit plan is no longer an option for new employees. The negotiated changes to this will increase the minimum contribution from 3% to 6%, and the maximum contribution from 6% to 9% over a phase-in period to begin an additional 1% February 28, 2016, an additional 1% July 1 of 2016, and additional 1% July 1 of 2017. The expected cost, or rather, the minimum cost of those changes will be $51,136 over three years. However, the maximum exposure for those changes to the city of Dover is $134,199, which is a combination of the minimum and some additional adjustments over a three-year period. So the total financial impact of the contract over a three-year period, if you take the wage increase plus the maximum exposure of the 401 purchase plan, is roughly $966,584. The additional changes associated with the contract include, for new employees, an 80/20 cost-sharing measure for new employees coming in, whereas the city of Dover will cover 80% of the premium. The employee is responsible for 20% of the premium, regardless of which plan is selected by the employee. They will continue that 80/20 split through their career, assuming there are no other changes. If they retire, new employees coming in, when they retire, dependent care is the responsibility of the employees, and in retirement, the cost-sharing would be 80/20 on the employee-only plan. There are some additional changes that we talked about with the removal of Article 41 in the current contract. This is an article that allows the union to request adjustments to grading of current positions. That article is being removed. There are some additional article changes related to on-call and call-in pay, mainly clarifications to when you get called in one hour before your shift, not pay the minimum two-hour because it would be pyramid-ing of overtime rates. All other components of the contract would remain in effect. That's where we stand at this point. The agreement, tentative agreement was ratified by the union. I'd say at this point, it's probably been close to a month ago, and as I said, we've discussed this twice in executive sessions. I believe the questions have been answered going forward. Staff fully supports the tentative agreement, as we would like to move forward, get the contract signed, and move in the next phase of the successor agreement. There are members here from the negotiating team on behalf of the union, on behalf of the city staff, it was myself, Mr. Kirby Hudson was there, Kim Hawkins, the Human Resource Director, and Mrs. Mitchell, and we would recommend approval of the successor agreement as outlined for the Dover Organization of Employees. This agreement would, as I said, be backdated to July 1 of 2015 and will run through June 30, 2018. Happy to answer any questions?
Questions for Mr. Conig. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Conig, what is the wage level for the bottom level of the employees currently, the hourly wage level?
The hourly wage level.
While you're looking that up, I just want to see how far above minimum that is because there is a likelihood that the state minimum wage is going up, so.
The current grade six, which are the library pages, according to Ms. Hawkins tonight, step A is at $8.50, so that would get adjusted by 50 cents immediately, and then it would go up by another quarter on July 1 of 16, and then an additional quarter on July 1 of 17. Depending on what minimum wage legislation is finally passed by the state, it could be impacted slightly by that.
Thank you, because you could end up with a competitive problem if we don't, even though we may technically have some exemptions under a labor agreement. You could lose a lot of people.
I think we would have to adjust that depending on legislation. There are not very many people in grade six. I think it is only the library pages that are in that section. I think more of the city wages start at the $10 per hour and above.
Thank you very much.
Other questions for Mr. Conig? Councilman Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Conig, specifically for the record, for everybody out there watching, how much is this going to cost the taxpayers? Do we have the money, and how will affect the tax increase?
Mr. Lewis, it will. As I said, the total estimated increase in cost is roughly $966,584 over a three-year period. So, under the current contract, the city anticipated spending roughly $22.3 million over the next three years if nothing changed, which we all know is not practical. And, under the new terms of the contract, as proposed, we believe that those labor costs will be roughly $23.138 million. That's how we come up with the $832,385 of salary plus load. The difference between 832,385 and 966,584 is the potential impact based on the changes to the 401 plan. We're not sure. We know the minimum cost of that will be $51,136. I would say the maximum cost is that other number, the $134,199. This contract will be paid for this year, I believe, through cost savings related to open positions. Going forward for FY17 and FY18, we are building the personnel spreadsheets right now for those, and it's been very clear from several council members that they don't want a tax rate increase proposed for FY17, so we're doing everything we can to keep our budget within the expected tax collection for FY17, as well as other revenue sources associated with FY17. At this point, it does not appear that the adoption of this contract would prevent us from maintaining the current tax rate for FY17, but I have to confirm that as we build the budget for FY17.
So there's no guarantees?
There are no guarantees, but there's been clear direction from city council that they do not wish to review a tax increase.
And the other question, I don't know if you directly answered it, was do we have the funding?
I believe the FY16 cost can be contained within the revised budget that's going forward. I think the first ordinance, Donna, will be next time. So we are working on, Ms. Mitchell's working on budget revisions that include the changes for the FOP contract, project carryforwards and stuff. This number right now, I don't think is played into that ordinance, but the cost of, you know, roughly $200,000, $250,000 for the current year, because we're only having a wage increase from the end of September through June 30, I believe is going to be able to be absorbed in salary savings and benefit savings from open positions. And then, we are seeing increased revenues associated with things such as transfer taxes. There were increased revenues in the FY16 budget that will be realized based on the changes to the licensing increases that council passed that were not changes to the licensing increases that council passed that were not part of our initial revenue projections. So I believe that the impact of a new tentative agreement for Dover will be able to be contained in the revenue projections and expenses associated with FY '16.
Well, for the people out there watching, they're not going to understand all this financial dialect. So is your answer yes, or is your answer no?
Yes, I believe so.
So, yes, we do have the funding for this contract?
Yes, I believe we have in the current revenue projections and budget for FY '16 the funds to cover FY '16 expenses.
And as far as a future property tax increase, you cannot determine at this point whether there will be one based on this contract?
I cannot, because I cannot predict at this point exactly what the state revenue projections will be, or the state revenues being transferred to the City of Dover will be. I do know that the labor component of our services is the highest-cost component, and we've got to secure those labor costs so we can enter them into the draft budgets going forward, and then work backwards from those numbers to make sure we can balance our budget.
Councilman Neal.
If, are we obligated, if the state raises the minimum wage, to raise our contracts to that level? And if it is, is it possible that we would face either layoffs, and if you wanted to keep the cost down for the taxpayers on the tax rate?
Mr. Neal, I don't, I would rather not speculate on the minimum wage proposals. It appears to me, at least from what I've heard, that the increases in the minimum wage will not substantially affect any of our labor contracts. There may be one or two positions in the contract that would be affected by it. We would have to review those. A, we would have to honor the state minimum wage, because even though we have a labor agreement in place, the state minimum wage would supersede that, as far as I know. So I don't believe that the discussion about minimum wage is going to affect the overall city budget. Unless the minimum wage grows to $15 or $20 an hour overnight, that will have an effect on city budget.
Other questions, I'm sorry, other questions for Mr. Conig. What is the pleasure of council? Councilman Neal.
I move that we adopt the contract.
Second.
The move by Councilman Neal, and second by Councilman Cole, approve the tentative labor agreement for the Dover organization employees. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the items that we had requested a little bit ago, over a year ago, was to target trying to keep labor costs under 2% increase per year. And it looks like the staff has done so. It looks like you're talking about about 1 and 1/4% plus the retirement. It looks like we're keeping it under the 2% target. So I would like to congratulate all sides for agreeing to that.
Thank you, council. Any further discussion of the matter? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
No.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Hedgeson?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries seven to one. Item number seven, evaluation of bids, demolition of properties 105, 111, and 115 South New Street. Mr. Conig, would you please brief us on this item?
Thank you. This is an action form that's coming forth from the Planning and Inspections Office on behalf of both the City Manager's Office, I think, on behalf of potentially the Police Department, and on behalf of a number of other areas of the City of Dover. The city recently acquired both 105 and 115 South New Street from the House of Pride. As we were identifying those transactions and working our way to completion, Downtown Dover Partnership purchased 111 South New Street, which is situated immediately in between 105 and 115. Because these properties have been significant nuisance properties over a number of years, and staff has confirmed that they've drawn a disproportionate amount of police responses related to these properties, the city had indicated very early on that it was our intent, once purchased, to proceed to demolition as quickly as possible. Staff recommended the packaging of all three properties under one demolition bid to secure the best price possible. This bid was prepared, bid package was prepared by the Department of Planning and Inspections on behalf of both the Downtown Dover Partnership and the other city departments. Requests for proposals were sent out through our purchasing agent under bid number 160030PI. Seven companies submitted bids on behalf of the vendors. And based on the attached table, the city is recommending the lowest total bid, the amount of $46,400, submitted by dependable construction, to facilitate the demolition and removal of all debris at 105, 111, and 115 South New Street. Staff has reviewed the submissions and supports the action to award the contract to the low bidder. It's a dependable construction in the amount of $46,400. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Conig. Councilman Sutler.
Yes, Mr. Conig, who will pay for the asbestos testing for all three units? Who will pay for the asbestos testing for all three units?
So the asbestos testing is being divided between each property. So the city ultimately will pay for the testing and removal and disposal at 105 and 115. And then the removal, the survey, removal, and disposal for 111 South New Street, those expenses will be covered by the partnership. We appropriated the expenses out in accordance with who owns each property.
So is there going to be like a separate cause? There's going to be asbestos cause, removal cause, the sampling cause, then a removal cause, separate? And then the demo cause would be 46,400, correct?
Right. The asbestos costs were below the amount needed to come to council. The demolition cost as a package is above the amount required, so that we had to come to council for it.
What is your forecast for the asbestos cost? Because I do know that, or have you already conducted the asbestos analysis?
The asbestos abatement actually started today, so we have those contracts in hand. I didn't bring those numbers with me.
Okay, so what I'm asking is, I know as a contractor that once you have someone perform the asbestos testing, they set one price, but then the samples may come back additional that may drive your cost up to where you may need approval from the city council for three units. I know it can range for one unit from $6,000 in that process to $3,000, at least it's $3,000. So my question is, what is the least amount cost in a demo process that you do not need approval from the city council?
We can issue contracts under $25,000 without counseling.
Thank you.
Councilman Lewis.
Mr. Conig, so the total amount budgeted is $56,500, correct? Including the environmental cost, which would be the asbestos?
Right, but I think that's the city's demolition cost plus environmental costs.
Okay, so the city's paying $32,200.
Right.
Where's that coming out of?
That is coming out of the budget amendment that we did, that we will be doing here coming up beginning at the next leg of the committee meeting. That money was appropriated through some of the carryforward balances for the purchase of the property. Asked council to authorize savings from FY '15 purchase, and then these expenses related to demolitions come into that, a favorable revenue projection for FY '16 that we're realizing right now.
And the $14,200 is coming from the Downtown Dover Partnership. Now, is that the money by any chance that we were awarded by the governor recently?
No, no, this is...
Mr. Conig, can you use the microphone?
Is that a completely different scenario?
The money, say that again.
The $14,200, that's being paid by the Dover Downtown Partnership?
Correct.
According to this committee action form I'm reading?
Yes.
That money is not money that we received from the state at any point, is it?
It is not. It is operating, it's operating revenues that the partnership has in their possession. Yes. It's not money that was transferred from the state of Delaware.
Okay, so in essence, this is all city money?
No, so once the city transfers any money to the partnership, it's the partnership money.
Further questions for Mr. Conig? What is the pleasure of council?
Move to accept staff recommendation.
Second.
By Councilman Hare, and second by Councilman Neal, to accept staff recommendation. Evaluation of bids, demolition of properties at 105, 111, and 115 South New Street. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hedgeson?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Agenda item number eight, annexation rezoning request, first reading of the proposed ordinance 2016-08, is recommended for referral to the Utility Committee on February 23, 2016, the Planning Commission on March 21, 2016, and that a public hearing be set for April 11, 2016, at 7:30 p.m. Copies of all proposed ordinances are available at the entrance of the council chambers or can be obtained from the city clerk's office. This is for property located at 1102 South State Street, consisting of 6,331 plus or minus square feet, owned by Capital Cleaners and Launderers, Inc. Property is currently zoned BG, General Business District, Kent County zoning classification. And the proposed zoning is C2A, limited central commercial, City of Dover zoning classification. I will entertain a motion for its referral as recommended.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Councilman Hare, and seconded by Councilman Sutler. Any questions on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed, motion carries unanimously. I will now defer to the city clerk for the introduction of the proposed ordinance in accordance with Section 1-9 of the Dover Code. Mrs. McDowell?
Proposed ordinance number 2016-08, amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the City of Dover by changing the zoning designation of property located at 1102 South State Street. This constitutes the first reading. The final reading is scheduled for Monday, April 11, 2016, at 7:30 p.m.
Thank you. Agenda item number nine, next we have the first reading of proposed ordinances. Final action by council will take place during the second reading of the ordinances on February 22, 2016. Copies of all proposed ordinances are available at the entrance of the council chambers or can be obtained from the city clerk's office. There are no questions or proposed amendments. I will defer to the city clerk for the introduction of the ordinances in accordance with Section 1-9 of the Dover Code. There's no action to take at this time. Madam Clerk?
Proposed ordinance number 2016-05, amending Chapter 106, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 3, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Division 2, Metered Parking, Section 106-164, Violation Penalty. And proposed ordinance number 2016-06, amending Chapter 26, Businesses, Article 2, Licenses, Section 26-40, License Issuance, Expiration, and Form, and Section 26-42, Penalty for Late Payment of License fee. This constitutes the first readings. The final readings are scheduled to take place on February 22, 2016.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Agenda item number 10 is our final agenda item, with council members' announcements. Are there announcements from council members?
For German.
Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make known that Mount Zion AME Church has its 200th anniversary, oh, actually of the denomination, the 200th anniversary denomination will be celebrated at 3:00 p.m. this Sunday, February 14, at the location in Dover. Everyone is invited. It's an historic event that has true historic significance.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Other announcements from council members. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Councilman Hare, seconded by Councilman Cole. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed, we stand adjourned. Thank you.[1675.52]